We're gonna go ahead and start. Mr. Brown, you want to do the invocation, then we do the pledge of allegiance.
Dear God, we come to you with a thankful heart tonight. We thank you for the ability to be here. We ask you to be with our community, with all the loss that's been recently. We ask you to be with those people out in Kentucky and California. We ask that you be with our nation during this time, dear God. We pray that you comfort people, you bring healing, dear God, and you restore things in their lives. We ask you take care of us tonight, help us to make good decisions, watch over our families, and keep us safe on all of our travels as we go home. We ask all these prayers in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. We're in the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need approval of the previous minutes. All of you have had to, have been sent to you and had the opportunity to read those over. Are there any changes you'd like to make?
Make a motion, we approve the previous minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, show a right hand. Public participation on agenda items?
Is this something that's on the agenda or not?
Let's go ahead and let him talk.
Mr. Diberry, just go come right here.
Can't we talk first?
You get to talk first.
I'm about to find here something else I don't want to talk about.
They may get my little notes so I can kind of follow along what I want to say. I'm Jack Diberry. I'm an eighty-five-year-old taxpayer. And I've been paying school tax for sixty-five years. I figure that's long enough, and I don't know if I'm gonna have any luck or not. Now, before you stop me, I know this is not the place for school thing, but I'm gonna tell you, we gotta get some industry in here to help on the tax base. I understand we're kind of a small county compared to finances, but we're gonna get it raised up somewhere or another. And it's our own fault. We hadn't worked hard enough to get nothing in here. I don't feel that. And you talk to people and they say, "You ain't got no water, you ain't got no sewage," which is true. We don't have enough to furnish nothing major, but you might as well forget about this big lake now. We know we can get that. But we could build a lake in each corner of the county and get enough water to supply something that somebody would be attracted and to locate here in Harlson County. I understand that's something to do with the railroad in here. I don't know what that's gonna entail, what's that gonna bring in. I hope it's something beneficial. But the reason I'm saying what I am about to say, they won't let you talk when you go down there, and I've been down there. If you give them about three weeks' notice where they know what you're gonna say, they can research all that stuff and have it ready and give you the right answer. But I'm not my fool then. I'd go if they'd let me get up like I am now and say something about it, but that's another thing that's in my mind now is, they tell me that it can't be done, but I'm not a lawyer. Some of these people are smart enough to do it. The school superintendent could be put back to where the citizens of Harlson County elect him. It used to be that way.
Yes.
And I think it was under Jimmy Davos' term. I'm not sure on that, that he was appointed then. But all he has to answer to is four people. I think that's what's on the school board. And I just seen in the paper this past week, well, they built a big thing out there. I don't know how many million dollars. Maybe they need it. I'm glad for them to have it. But we need to know something about stuff like that, 'cause it's our tax money that's paying for it. And I'm just upset, 'cause they don't run it by nobody to do what they want to do out there. I don't think that's right. I don't think that's a democratic way of doing anything. But nevertheless, they're getting by with it, and they will as long as it stays like it is. But some of the attorneys here might know how to get that back on the ballot, but I'd like to see it on the ballot before I pass away and get the vote on it. And then there's something else on this thing too now. I've been seeing in the paper, I don't know where I have any news, pick up the gazelle or something and look at it, but there's been some bickering over the Harlson and Carroll County splash funds out there. And I wanted to go to the county, but I don't have much say on that, but I can tell you what did happen to me. I paid for my two boys. I paid tuition at Bremen City School all the years they went through high school. Couple of years after they got out, a few years, I don't know exactly how many, they forced me into the city limits of Bremen. Now, some people I had working on it, they passed away, and I had to use another attorney, and I won't call his name, but he didn't give me justice. And I don't think that was right. Now I'm having to pay the city tax. They ought to reimburse me for those tuition years, I think, but they won't. And then, if you're talking about Harlson County now, I've got a two-acre track in Harlson County, the first one on that road. Nobody's approached me on that about leasing it. It's just a piece of dollar store, in case you people know where it is. And nobody's approached me on trying to lease it or anything, but it's all in the county. Carroll County hasn't got no say-so in it. The line runs right in front of my house. If I could pick my house up and sit on one of those other roads, I could save over thirty-five hundred dollars a year of school tax. I'm not a big land on it, but I got several little tracts of land, and every tract you have, you have to pay school tax on it. And I always saw the little fees they have on it. I don't know what they're all called there. But anyhow, that's, that's kind of what I'm into. I just need some help. I'm on a fixed income. You can tell by looking at me, I'm old enough to be on fixed income. And it's just like, now, this is a different, I'm finding it a different day, but I'm gonna tell you this, where you fill it in between the blanks. The first of this year, I got a letter from Social Security saying they were gonna give me a raise, which they did a lot of, most of, about against cost of living rates, what you call it. Okay, when my check come, it was seventy dollars less than what I've been drawing. I'm drawing today seventy dollars less than I was drawing before they gave me that raise. Okay, I finally got in touch with Social Security, and they told me my insurance and Medicare and all that stuff had went up in Tucky. I don't consider that a cost of living rate. I'd have been better off if I never noted it. But that's my situation. I appreciate y'all taking all that into consideration, and thank you for letting me have time to speak on all of it.
On the industry, last week, or the last meeting, we announced a thirty-million-dollar industry that's coming to the city of Buckhannon, the Buckhannon Development Park. Within ninety days, they're doing their due diligence now, so we're working on that, you know. We've got movement coming. We've got whirlwind at Tallahassee has came in in the last six months to a year, and then Division Five. So we're getting a little industry into the county, and we've got several more that we're looking, talking to.
I realize what it's gonna take is the increase of our tax base.
I don't think your taxes are going up this year. They may not, they may not, you still have the school tax.
Hopefully y'all keep that in mind, though. Senior, you gotta have some kind of help. Not just me, but all of them.
On the water, we're working on a well out on Five Points Road.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it's gonna produce, we know it'll produce two-hundred thousand a day and up to five-hundred thousand. That will supply the whole northeast side of the county and down to the Bremen area. Once we get it, we're negotiating on the land contract now. We already know what the well will do. So we're working on that too, and I think you're in luck tonight. We've got a lady here that's over part of the Career Academy, and she might like to tell you about the school system, what they's opened up like. Megan, you wanna?
God, I can't deny it. So I think that part of, I think we invested a lot of money.
Come on in, anyone here.
Come where they can hear you and say.
Do you mind if I stand beside you for a minute?
Sure, don't.
Okay. So I think a lot of the, the big building that you saw go up is the College and Career Academy. And so what, a lot of businesses that are coming into the county, and you're saying to take the burden off of the residents and shift to industry, they want to know, can we provide a workforce? That's one of the big stumbling blocks, just like water. So what the College and Career Academy is gonna do is provide the workforce that they need so they will come to Harlson County, so that we can supply them with those young adults that will be at their businesses and work with them for thirty years.
Well, you know anybody in Harlson County, though? Like, getting a kind of decent job, they gotta go Douglasville or Atlanta. There's nothing around here for a graduate to work at and make a good living.
Yes, sir. And I think in the past, that's been the case, but we're trying to change that. And so we are kind of having to put our best foot forward first to bring them here, so that we can do that for you.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I finished school right up here on the hill in nineteen fifty-six, so, you know.
Just a few years ago.
Yeah, a few years ago.
Why don't you go out to the high school? I'm sure she would love to.
Yeah, I would love for you to come. But I understand what you're saying. My grandmother's in the same situation that you are, and so I would like to see that for her as well.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what I'm trying to do. They invite me whenever businesses and industries come to tour, they invite me, they come to the school and look around, because they want to know, do we have a workforce? We want people to live in Harlson County, work in Harlson County, and then raise their kids and stay in Harlson County.
I do too, and I don't know how to, how to do that.
Well, I'm trying to work on it.
Okay. I appreciate you for doing that.
Yes, sir.
Good to meet you.
Any more? That's only one. We kind of skipped around. We need to approve the agenda. I'd like to mark item two and item three off and add executive session.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda without item two and three, and we're gonna add an executive session at the end, so that would be what?
Item number nine.
Item number nine, okay.
I'll second.
Okay, any more discussion? Or will that be on executive session? First of all, Matt. We've got a motion in a second. All in favor, show a right hand. Item number one, we've got a special guest here tonight, Kathleen Bowen from the ACCG. She is, and we've got another guest, Senator Anna Vatarde. You wanna come on up?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm Kathleen Bowen. I'm here on behalf of the Association County Commissioners of Georgia. We are the organization that represents all one hundred and fifty-nine counties in this state, and I'm part of our Government Affairs staff that's at the Capitol every day advocating on behalf of these commissioners here in other counties across the state. And every year, we do Legislative Service Awards to legislators that have helped us this past session passing legislation that's important to counties. So Senator Anna Vatarde here did, I don't know if you know, but it's really hard to get a bill passed, and he was one of the sponsors, he was the main Senate sponsor for House Bill nine thirty-four that maximizes the collection for single-county T-Splas, which is Harlson County, is one of forty-two counties in the state that's collecting a T-Splas, which is money going for the sole purpose of transportation purposes. So the bill he worked on and passed maximizes that collection period, so it's gonna mean you're gonna be able to plan, your Board of Commissioners here are gonna be able to plan for those full five years of transportation projects. So at ACCG, we are very appreciative of Senator Anna Vatarde, and I'm here today to present to him with two thousand and twenty-two ACCG Legislative Service Award. And you see, our, we had a photographer go around when ACCG's a hundred-year anniversary, and they took pictures of all the courthouses in the state. That is your courthouse here, and I believe this is the Paulding County Courthouse on the award, but I'm sure he loves Harlson County just as much, just as his home county, correct? That's why we put it on the award. So can we bring up Senator Vatarde?
Can you say something here too? He, while he was working on the bill for the ACCG, he worked on one for Harlson County, where our T-Splas had expired. They were not supposed to have an election, a special election on an even-numbered year, but he and Representative Smith worked on this and got it passed. We were the only county in the state that could have this election. And for the ones of you that don't know, it was the first bill the governor signed this legislative year. So he was working both directions.
Thank you. Well, first, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, and Kathleen, thank you for the honor. Thank you for being here today. To the chairman's point, the bill that we got to work with, with Representative Smith, I think we passed literally from beginning to end in about probably thirteen to fourteen days. And I will tell you, to try and pass a bill within two weeks and have the governor's signature on it is, quite frankly, historic. And I told Tyler one day, we're gonna write a book to talk about literally what did it take to see this happen, and, you know, my Senate colleagues and Representative Smith's House colleagues to allow this to happen for Harlson County, which is a pretty major deal, when you're talking about anywhere from six to ten million dollars in revenue to support infrastructure in a county that's rural and also growing. I do want to just talk about, a little bit about the T-Splas, but I also want to just give some general comments too, that, you know, I've enjoyed serving this county since being elected. It wasn't an easy journey to get here, but as many of you know, and thank you to the commissioners who did support me, you know, to get here, you know, politicians will come to you, and they're gonna make promises all the time. Ninety percent of them, they ain't gonna keep. The one promise, the only promise I ever made to this county and this community, to the mayor, to the other mayors in this community, is that, you know, I would be here and I would treat you like my next-door neighbor, even though I live in Dallas and North Paulding County and have three counties. I will tell you that from day one, when Representative Smith and I took office, we had conversations with Commissioner Pat Wilson, who is the Commissioner of Economic Development. It was the first time he actually had a phone call, a proactive phone call, from the delegation asking for assistance and asking for economic support for Harlson County in over a decade. And I will tell you that that message of working as one is a powerful message when you're, quite frankly, a smaller county competing against metro Atlanta, you're competing against other rural communities, and quite frankly, the other conversation is, you're competing against Birmingham, you're competing against Chattanooga, and, you know, the biggest, the biggest competitor obviously is Carroll County. I support Harlson County. I will always support Harlson County. I consider Harlson County to be a brother and sister to my home county of Paulding County. And although district lines have changed, Congressional, Senate, a little bit of the House, I believe your economic goals, your community goals are the same as ours in Dallas and my community, and the same as Rockmart, Cedar Town, and areas in between, because if our three counties do not succeed, the rest of West Georgia will not succeed. And I am also, you know, very selfish to the future that this, this board and other leaders in this community do across the county as it relates to, you know, the priorities, as I know there are competing interests that other counties have, but I think Harlson Counties need to come first. And so when we're gonna talk about water, we're gonna talk about transportation. Quite frankly, if we're gonna talk about loss negotiations or anything else, I think if you want state leaders, you want the commissioner, you want the governor, you want anybody in the legislature to listen to you, my only hope, as I've told folks in Polk County, and I've told friends in Paulding County where I live, that if you do not speak as one, you will probably get nothing. And that is the reality of it. And I have seen this community come together. We've had different, difficult meetings in terms of what's, what's, you know, the future of economic development in this county. And again, as I've told leaders, I don't live here, so I'm very sensitive to what the people who do live here want in terms of the quality of life. But I think all of us agree, we hate taxes, we don't want to see government growth, and the only way you make this bodies, this board, this body easier, and folks like Mayor Scott and others' jobs easier, is you have to bring industry to this county. And the twenty corridor, the twenty-seven corridor, and others that run through this county are ripe for growth. We're working to put Harlson County on the freight and logistics map, working with the state DOT and the planning commissioner, Janie Miller, and our other supporting cast with ACCG, GMA, and others, because this is the gateway to the West. This is the gateway where future growth is gonna happen in the state, as we talk about supply chain, logistics, manufacturing. And we all know you have a workforce that wants to work, and the work that the Board of Education has done, and Megan and others, to build and open that Career Academy, it is a significant deal to be able to take that to investors and business owners and CEOs and say, "Hey, you're putting where your money, where your mouth is, you're putting your tax dollars where your mouth is, and you're serious about it." And so I don't think that needs to be taken lightly. I think this entire community in West Georgia, we have a long way to go. We've not had a seat at the table, we have not had a voice, we've not been relevant, to be frank, as I've told folks in Paulding County. In far as I'm concerned, those days are in, whether I serve as your senator in the next six months or even beyond with the next senator, and the next senator is very, you know, has, we have a very clear understanding in terms of my priorities, and that I will, whether I'm in this county or not, fight for the, for the success of this community, because it is that important to Dallas and other communities to the north and even east of here. So I just want to say thank you for your leadership. This is not an easy job. You know, I don't care, as I tell people, I don't care if I get beat up, I don't care if you disagree with me. My number-one job is to fight for the citizens, fight for what's right, but we have to see prosperity and get the families who are in poverty, the middle-class families who are busting their tails, trying to provide for food, childcare, pay their, pay their utilities, keep a roof over their head, working multiple jobs, and those in law enforcement in between. And the yeoman's job our teachers are doing right now in this environment is absolutely insane. So, and my wife's a teacher, and I see it every single day, what the barriers that we're dealing with. So my only ask is that, you know, this county, work together. I hope all the cities will work with the county, and I appreciate the county's leadership for what you all are trying to do in the best interest of the county, as we think about, you know, infrastructure and projects, and if you want those jobs to come here, it needs to be one voice and not many newspaper articles about, you know, what's fair and what's not fair. So what's fair to the citizens is what's number one. So thank you all, and God bless y'all.
Can we get a picture? Do you want to stand there and we come in front of you, or do y'all like to come around?
No, ma'am.
Can we get a picture, please? Thank you. It's such representative. I might have to take a photo next.
It's okay.
Where do you like to stand? Hands up.
Yeah, back in front of this would be good.
Okay. Ready? Okay.
Item number four, anti-retaliation whistleblower's policy. Just to train the department heads in classes, that no retaliation for a whistleblower, you know, it's got federal guidelines.
Yeah, I think the main reason to adopt this is that we had a recommendation from our insurer that we needed to have a policy like this on our books, and it is fairly standard amongst all local governments these days to have a policy that authorizes employees to complain about things they see that are wrong.
I hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the anti-retaliation whistleblower policy.
Second. We've got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, show a right hand. Item number five, E-911 participation in peace officers' annuity and benefit program. What this is, is we'd like to, it's part of the retirement for E-911. They have let the E-911 operators be a part of that, and I think it's twenty-five dollars a month.
Perfect.
You have to be in it for fifteen years. It's not gonna cost the county, but what do we figure, four thousand dollars a year? And it's gonna give a retirement to all the 911 operators.
Can, can they withdraw it if they leave, or does that money stay in for 911 operators throughout the state?
They withdraw it if they leave. It will be their proceeds. So if they leave, they will take that money with them.
Okay. I would like to, on that, just to add to it, the POAB is a great benefit, coming from a law enforcement background and still serving in that capacity. A lot of times, folks forget that the 911 operators are oftentimes the one to take that call, whether it be a mom calling about their child passing away or not breathing, and they're walking them through it until public safety can arrive on scene. So we talk about taking the money with them. Yeah, they might be able to take the money, but they also gotta take what's locked in their memory as well. So I see the benefit for offering this to our 911 operators for the job that they do, because ultimately, when somebody's life's on the line, or you're wanting help, that's who you call, and that's who you talk to first, so the benefit's definitely there. And I would make a motion to approve their participation in the POAB benefit fund with us covering that twenty-five dollars a month for the ones that want to enroll in that program. I'll second.
I'd like to add too that the 911 operator is the only one that don't know what happened. They know what happens up until the public safety people get there, but they don't ever hear where they live, where they died, what happened.
So these employees, they, it's more, it is a retirement plan, but can they arbitrarily withdraw from it and whatnot, or they gotta leave it in there, or after someone, whether they close the account if they?
They have to leave it in there unless they leave the 911 operator.
Okay.
You know, and then I think you have to be fifteen years before they can draw. And to the worst part of our situation, some of the ones don't have fifteen years left to anticipate. So it's not gonna be that big a cost to the county. ...anticipate. So it's not going to be that big a cost to the county. And it's, to me, it's a deserving...
It is.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, right hand. Intergovernmental agreement for the lost distribution.
I would like to make a motion that we table that vote for the intergovernmental agreement for the lost distribution. I feel like there's still some work to be done there. There's still some negotiations to be had. So I would like to table that vote, or make a motion to table that vote.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to table this till we've still got time. What we'll have to do at this point is go into non-binding arbitration. So that's the will of the board. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, show a right hand. Any opposed? That would be item six and seven. And that brings up item number eight, Sunday alcohol sales and liquor sales on the November ballot at this time. I'm going to recuse myself, because my family owns convenience stores.
Mr. Mecklen, do you want to explain to the...
Yeah, I'd be glad to explain this. We have drawn up, I think it's four separate resolutions here, and I'll go, just go through them one at a time and explain what they're for, what the intent is. And let me qualify by saying each and every one of these resolutions is to call for a referendum to allow the citizens of Harrelson County to vote. They all do deal with alcoholic beverages, but you are not actually approving any additional sale of alcoholic beverages in the county. You're simply approving referendums to let the citizens decide that. The first resolution that you would be considering is to present a referendum to the citizens, which the question will be on the ballot. Shall the issuance of licenses for the packaged sales of distilled spirits be approved in the unincorporated portions of Harrelson County? That question initially came up with regard to people making inquiries as to whether or not they could open certain businesses here in the county, a distillery specifically that I recall. And they cannot do that until the county has some law which allows the package sale of distilled spirits. So resolution number one is for a referendum to allow the package sales of distilled spirits in the unincorporated areas. Second resolution is to call for a referendum to allow buy-the-drink sales on Sundays by licensed retailers of malt beverages, wine, and distilled spirits, and to allow package sales on Sundays by retailers of malt beverages. This is typically called the Sunday Sales referendum and resolution, that if the people of Harrelson County vote to authorize you to pass a law to that effect, then that would authorize the Sunday sales of alcoholic beverages in the county between the hours of 12:30 PM and 11:30 PM. And then the final resolution is for the referendum to have the issuance of licenses for package sales of distilled spirits in the unapproved portion of Harrelson County. So just to reiterate, package sales in the unincorporated areas, sales by the drink in the unincorporated areas, and then Sunday sales between 12:30 PM and 11:30 PM. In order to do any of those things, you have to have public approval and a referendum first. If you get public approval and a referendum, then it will come back to the commission to decide what rules and regulations you will have concerning any of those items. And you can make them as strict or as lenient as this board chooses to make them. But until you get past that threshold issue of whether the public has approved it, you can't do anything.
Does anybody have any questions? No. So we need a, can we vote on it all together?
Um... I would probably prefer that you vote on each one of them separately. And if you want me to just kind of lead through those one at a time, so that you can vote on them, we'll do that. Did you have them in any particular order?
I didn't.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to start then the way that I was given, they were given to me. The first one is going to be the resolution authorizing a referendum to allow buy-the-drink sales on Sundays and package sales on Sundays. So that's the first resolution. It's going to be further resolved that the election superintendent shall cause the following language to be printed or written on the ballot. Shall the governing authority of Harrelson County be authorized to permit and regulate Sunday sales of dispilled spirits or alcoholic beverages by the drink? And shall the governing authority of Harrelson County be authorized to permit and regulate package sales by retailers of malt beverages, wine, and distilled spirits on Sundays between the hours of 12:30 PM and 11:30 PM? That's resolution number one.
So we need a motion and a second to move forward, one way or the other?
I make a motion, we approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Can I see your right hand? Any opposed?
Okay. Resolution number two is going to be related to the issuance of licenses for the package sales of distilled spirits in the unincorporated portions of Harrelson County. Again, this is not buy-the-drink sales, but package sales of distilled spirits. So that's the second resolution.
Make a motion, we approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor, right hand? Any opposed?
All right. All right. And the third one is the, I think this is the third one, but it may have been actually incorporated with the first one, but it is whether or not to authorize the sale of liquor by the drink when the, it was in the unincorporated portion of the county.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor, right hand? Any opposed?
The next step in this process, based on your approval of that, is that the election superintendent will issue a call for the election, which will be scheduled for November the 8th. And we have to get that to the election superintendent by not this Friday, but a week from Friday, so that they can get it on the ballot in time for the November election, and the people of Harrelson County will make their decision.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number nine is executive session. We need a motion to go into executive session over an employee.
I'll make a motion to move into executive session in reference to personnel.
Second.
All in favor, show a right hand.
They always got somebody new up here.
Do we need a motion to go back into session?
A move that we go back into regular session.
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay.
Y'all asked them to. Thank you.
Okay, this was over a personnel matter. We have, we're going to accept the retirement of the fire chief as of October 31st. He has served his county 21 years yesterday as our fire chief, and he's agreed to stay on until we can replace him. Brian, you want to say something?
I just wanted to say to the citizens of this county, it's been a great 21 years of my career. Those guys, I met with all of them, past three days. Yeah, I remember when I was a kid, I started out, I had a fire knocker in my yard. My daddy was the chief out there, playing his tarot. I played fireman a lot, on the real fire truck. Daddy would go buy me a toy. And so it's been, actually, you know, a childhood dream to come back home. God has allowed all of it. It's for me to come back home for these 21 years, and to be with my family, and be with Dad where he went home to, the Lord, and spend time with my uncles and all my family. But it's been a great career. As everybody knows, I built chicken houses, and that's my retirement plan. And, you know, in the Bible, you don't have nothing about retirement. And so you work till you die, and you do something. Because if you go all the way around, you ain't going to have that last one. You're going to have something to do. So I'm looking forward to this. And in my family's prayer art about this, and my church family, and it's really, it's a blessing. Just want to say thank you to the citizens of this county for my time I've served, and looking forward to going home tomorrow.
Public participation on non-agenda items. Need a motion to adjourn.
A move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor? Yes, sir, Mr. Dewberry? They get about.
I think they're militating at 15, 16?
Yeah, it's probably about 60%. Are the taxes that close? 55 or 60? We don't allow them to have it. What we do is, by the legislature, by the laws of the state of Georgia, we have to approve their budget. But it don't make room for us to change it. It allows us to okay it, but not to change it, or to approve it, but not to change it. So it's basically just a formality for the commissioners to approve the school board's budget.
Do you disapprove it?
No.
No.
We're legally required to accept whatever the school board hands to us. And that's probably not the best answer. No, no, that's not the answer you want to hear, but that's the only answer we can give.
That's the legal answer.
Probably a pretty good way to put it. Do we have a motion and a second?
We've got a motion and a second. Already voted, we are adjourned.